This public meeting in order if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for servicemen and women throughout the world, for all those who have passed away recently in our community, and for all those suffering due to the pandemic.
Mr. Schuster.
President.
Mr. McAndrew.
President.
Dr. Rothschild.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, correspondence received from Mayor Page G. Cognetti dated June 17, 2021 regarding S&amp;P Global lifting City of Scranton rating from negative to stable. 3B, correspondence received from Department of Environmental Protection dated June 8, 2021 regarding flooding along Leggett Creek and Leach Creek. 3C, single tax office financial statements for the year ended December 31, 2018. 3D, overtime review for all departments as provided by city controller dated June 3, 2021 for the period January to June 2021. 3E, minutes of the composite pension board meeting held May 19, 2021. 3F, correspondence received from mayors of northeastern Pennsylvania requesting elected representatives to adopt legislation to repeal Act 43 restricting the use of consumer-grade fireworks.
Thank you. Are there any comments on any of the third order items? I have one comment, just to point out that 3C is the single tax office financial statements for the year ended December 31, 2018. It was pointed out last week that there was pages missing, so it's on the agenda today and the pages are there. Anyone else? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have a quick one. Not really announcement, I'd just like to wish everybody a happy and safe upcoming Fourth of July weekend.
Thank you. Anyone else? I have a few. City Hall and DPW are off Monday, July 5 in observance of the Fourth of July holiday. Garbage will be one day behind. As you can tell, Pennsylvania has lifted the mask mandate, so masks are not required in City Hall or in council chambers. However, obviously, if you're not vaccinated, the CDC recommends that you continue to wear masks and social distance for your own safety, and it's your own choice if you'd like to wear a mask or not. The Chamber of Commerce is attending a caucus on Tuesday, July 13 at 5:45 PM to give us a general update on their activities. And just a reminder, each speaker has five minutes. When you come up to the podium, if you could please state your name for the record, for the stenographer, and keep your comments to agenda items and city business. Mr. Boldenberg?
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
First speaker is Joan Hodouanis.
First, with regard to the city's dispute with the County Tax Claim Bureau, I have to agree with the Times Tribune editorial of June 27. The county's attempt to split Joseph Joyce's 10% legal fee with the county does nothing to lessen the financial burden on delinquent taxpayers, some of whom may have been victims of the pandemic. They still have to pay the full 10%, while Joseph Joyce continues to enjoy favored vendor status with the county. I can't wait until 2022. Maybe then this contract will be bid out. Next, I am still waiting for the collective bargaining agreements for the firefighters' union and single tax office to be reposted on the city's website. I'm waiting, and waiting. Next, I see you included the complete single tax office's financial statements in third order. What happened last week with those missing pages? And take a look at page 7, one of the missing pages. The total for checks to taxing authorities/expenses should be $165,166,082, not $163,340,055, a difference of $1,826,027. Who in City Hall is responsible for checking these documents for accuracy? Shouldn't the Controller's Office do this? Maybe I'm overreacting, but after all, it's nothing but monopoly money. Next, with regard to the Sorenti Center, how much money have we already spent on this facility, and how much more will we invest before the building is completely renovated? Next, with regard to the Controller's May 2021 report, do we have an explanation for the non-departmental expenditure for special items totaling $8,970,803.95? On to new business. First, with regard to the city's overtime, why did DPW admin exceed its overtime budget by 374% in the first six months of this year? And what about the other departments that also exceeded their budgets? I'm talking about City Council, 120%, Lips, 161%, DPW Engineering, 119%, and DPW Cleaning and Maintenance, 177%. The city has already spent 69% of its entire overtime budget. Next, I'm impressed by Larry West's government experience, starting in 2007 as a Dixon City Councilman, and continuing in 2010 as Senator Blake's Regional Director. I am less impressed by Carl Dealey's training and experience in information technology. His resume strikes me as little more than MBA buzzwords, and I should know, I have an MBA. Why do I get the impression that Mr. Dealey was given the position of IT Director as a consolation prize for being replaced as the BA? I think you should be offering more than $64,000 as salary for that position. It's key to the city's operations. You get what you pay for. And finally, I support the mayor's request to repeal the 2017 state law allowing the sale of aerial fireworks to the public. I'm tired of these people, many whom are on drugs or alcohol, firing off these explosive devices. What's the point of paying taxes if the city can't protect its residents? And I'll listen to your answers in fifth order. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jack White.
Hill Section, two blocks from Naught, beautiful Naught Park, thanks to Bob Gattens and his crew. I take my dog to the park every day, and I take enough poop bags for a lot of people. The noise continues. It's going to be the Fourth of July, so that's acceptable, I think. Otherwise, something should be done. The council president said something about Louis de Naples last week and his concern about the hazardous waste, and family, and kids, and, you know, what's happening to them. The neighbors in the city also have families and children that are experiencing this garbage on the streets. The trucks continue to plow by, heap to the brim with leche, leche, and sometimes even spilling onto the streets. So I think we all have concerns about that. The difference is, I guess, that what we can do as citizens is to come here and tell our leaders that we're concerned, and then our leaders have the power and authority to do something about it. I'm not aware of anything being done about it. I know council does things behind the scenes, very good things, but I haven't been hearing anything about what's being done to help the situation. So if it is being done behind the scenes, thank you, and I appreciate it, I'm sure everybody else does. I hope you all have a good holiday, and I hope that the people you love and love you back are safe and well. And I'm going to return the rest of my time to council, and hopefully, we can hear some feedback about what we have been discussing here, because I don't think we hear much feedback. And again, much of it is behind the scenes, and thank you. So, but again, I return my time to you and hope we can hear something. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Coyne.
I had planned to come forward and talk to you somewhat on platitudes, being the Fourth of July and Independence Day, and talk about citizens who came forward asking for changes in government, and who asked for city services for dusty and dirty streets, and maybe put forward that if these concerns were there that they had, maybe if they brought forward a suggestion or a request to City Council, such as for DPW to make an extra run with the street sweepers in their area because they are facing a difficulty in bringing that forward, it would be a move to a resolution for them, at least on a temporary basis. Changing city government is a wide task. Starting a commission to evaluate a home rule charter, including what should stay the same, what should be different, is a long and arduous task, and it's not just wiping one thing out, it's moving forward and dissecting where we want the government to move forward to in the future, and that is at the base of the independence and the structure of our country. That's where I had planned to go this week with those platitudes. But I have to take a look and address the appointment of Carl Dealey to the IT department. We have the Aveiro contract, which has been tabled, I believe, for a period of time, and that was Act 47, gave us $50,000. I have no idea what the earmarks on that $50,000 were, what it could be assigned to other than that specific area, if that funding could be used for an IT position, for an increased pay for an IT position. We are given forward a IT solution, and we have funding aside from it, with no definitions of what that funding actually can be used for, if it's only exclusively for this purpose, or the city can, under advisement, move it to different positions that may need that money, more than a temporary position to an outside contractor. Looking at Mr. Dealey's IT experience, it is severely lacking. And to understand this, we have to take a look at what an IT department does. It processes your email, it keeps your financial, it stores your data, it keeps your secrets, it keeps your city running, it deals with your communication between your departments. Everything you touch in operations between employees is the base point of the IT department. The fire department, when the chief came forward, suddenly, City Council had a rate of pay set for it, but that rate of pay was increased as money was suddenly found for it. Yet the IT department does not get that same respect. The real-world ramifications of this are plain and evident, not only because of the incursion last year because of the infrastructure holes that allowed ransomware to hit this city, but in a physical viewpoint of it, the IT world and dealing with the city's infrastructure is like dealing with a high-rise building in Florida. When you undermine the foundation of the IT and your IT security, everything that is built upon it is prone to collapse and destruction. The foundation of the IT department should be a critical juncture for this, at this point, especially considering the expanse of funding that has been allocated over this year and the coming years specifically for IT. Without direction, it is a building that is being put up with a bad foundation that is ripe to collapse, and when it does, it is going to cause irreparable harm. We need to take money, we need to allocate it towards IT, and we need a person who is properly educated in all the aspects to be put in that position. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Les Spindler.
Good evening, Council, Les Spindler, city resident, homeowner, taxpayer. As Joan said, last Saturday in the paper, there was article about the mayors, local mayors, don't want the law repealed to sell the aerial fireworks, and it was also on the news the night or two before. Well, you know, that's not the problem. The problem is you've got to enforce the laws that are on the books now. I've been living in Tripp Park for 32 years now, and this law is only four years old. I've been putting up with these fireworks for 32 years. People go to New York and buy them if they can't buy them here. They just go over the state line and buy them there. So having a legal in Pennsylvania isn't the problem. In Scranton, anyway, what they have to do, put every, all the police officers they have working the whole weekend, and saturate every part of the city, and arrest these people that are doing these illegal fireworks. Not only is it unsafe and annoying, I mean, sometimes they're doing it past 11 o'clock a night, it's also, it could be deadly, as was proven last year, where I think a gentleman from South Side was killed when a firework went off and killed him. That's unfortunate, but as I said, these laws have to be enforced. I think it's 100, 150 feet from a residence, you have to be that far away. There's nowhere in the city where you're 100, 150 feet away. And even the mayor of Pittston said that, about Pittston, he said that. So we just have to enforce the laws we have. So, all right, that's all I have to say on that. Yesterday, another 18-wheeler got lost. I was in my neighborhood again, although it was last evening. I didn't, I didn't hear, I was in the shower, my wife told me about it. But it went to go around my corner again and just missed my daughter's car. If he didn't stop, he would have dragged her car with it. But, oh, she lives next to me, she had to come out and move her car for the guy to get down the street. I spoke about this weeks ago, I said they should put a sign on Main Avenue that there's a turnaround on Dorothy Street. Was anything done about that?
We did communicate it to the DPW, and Mr. Boldenberg, if you could follow up on that, obviously, the sign was not put up, but we'll follow up.
Okay. Pave cuts, which I talked about for the last couple of weeks. I said last week they made a fourth pave cut on my block, and this goes past the curb, and that last one they made, it's like going down beneath the rest of the street. You have to come almost to a stop to go over that, or you're going to knock your front end out of line. They make these pave cuts, they don't fill them in right, maybe they will eventually, but something's got to be done. You shouldn't have to slow down to almost a stop to go down the street. These utilities are ridiculous, they get away with murder. Next thing. Last week, Tom Coyne came up to me and said, the week before, I had left when he spoke, and about this parking enforcement people, ticketing people parked the wrong way, and he told me they're not supposed to be doing that. Was that looked into?
Not to my knowledge, but I know that there's something on the books, you know, if you're on a two-way street, you have to park in the direction that the traffic is going, otherwise you'll pull out, and that's dangerous.
I thought he told me something different.
There was, according to Councilman Schuster, there was a request made, but I mean, common sense, for the most part, you know, it's, they're going to ticket you every time. They came to my street the one day, I got ticketed a few years ago, so I just started parking the right way, and I didn't get ticketed again.
Well, sometimes people pull by their house for like five, 10 minutes.
Oh, I understand that, I think they have to use discretion, I get that, but, you know, it's if they, they have to enforce the law, too, they can't.
Okay. Lastly, favorite subject of mine, I spoke about it for probably 20 years now, is what I call our illegal garbage tax. And for years, previous councils have told me, oh, it's not a tax, it's a fee. And I said, no, it's a tax. And it was just proven this year, it was on our tax bill, so it's a tax. We pay our property taxes to have our garbage picked up. We shouldn't have to pay $300 more a year to have our garbage picked up. It's illegal. It's taxation without representation. And I don't know if that has anything to do with what these people have, the lawsuit against the city, but I've said, like I said, for 20 years, it's not a fee, it's a tax. And I hope something's done about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lee Morgan.
Lee Morgan. I came in when the discussion was taking place about a storm water collection fee. And, you know, I don't know, does anybody on the council know who owns all the water in Pennsylvania? Anybody? The Commonwealth does. So my question is, why is the Commonwealth going to tax residents for their water? What's occurred in the Commonwealth is that this Commonwealth has not maintained the storm collection systems for decades, and they're collapsing, so they need money. So they've passed laws and implemented a fee schedule and a way to fine communities for not following their dictates. But I think that this case needs to go to the Supreme Court, and somebody should fight it, not a lawyer, no, a group of citizens, pro se litigators, because if you hire an attorney and he makes a mistake, your case is done. Okay? Once a court reaches a decision on something, it's finished. That's my opinion. Now, this Grant School District received $58 million in COVID aid money, but they've closed a school. I think they need to rebuild a school on that site, rip the building down or renovate it, and build a new school. I think we've shortchanged the citizens' children in this community for much too long. I sat down with the coordinator that the governor sent here a long time ago and talked about education in this Grant School District, and I think it's time for the politics to end, and I think it's time to start educating children. Now, the mayor wants to hire a group to come in here and talk about people leaving the city and the population decline over many decades. Well, that's why reopening, and the council, I agree with some of the stuff the previous speaker spoke about here, because any home rule charter commission that's going to sit is going to look at the charter, look at things that could be changed, whether it's worth it to rewrite the charter or just abolish it. Because we need to come up with solutions for what's happening in this city, and for a long time, city government and city residents have stuck their head in the sand and ignored all the red flags. We had the parking authority or the parking operators come in here and talk about money. But yet and still, we had a former mayor here who sold them, and he didn't go to jail for selling the parking authority or giving garages away, and he didn't go to jail for selling the Scranton Sewer Authority off. Very troubling things that came through this council, okay? I mean, you have to look at the reality of what's happened in this city over an extended period of time, and to be honest with you, a lot of councilmen have made a lot of very big mistakes, and the residents have paid for it. And the residents, they don't even care anymore. The 2.4% wage tax has to go away. Why are we paying all this layer after layer? You know, at the end of these meetings, maybe someday you should tell the residents, the council should tell the residents how many times the city's pension plans were fully funded in the history of the city's pension plans, and let them know exactly what's happening in this city, and all the politics that's been played. And then talk about Mayor Doherty changing the person that was running, Mellon Bank was taking care of the pension plans, and he shifted it, and they lost millions of dollars. Okay? And then he offered people double pensions. I was in these council chambers when all these things took place. You know, the things that we've experienced in this city are just remarkable. And the last thing I have here is, you know, we shouldn't name anything after President Biden, we should take it down. Okay? We see what's going on in all the major cities. We had a vice president that was collecting money to bail criminals out. And then a week ago, we had a shooting in Chicago where they executed a man right outside his car, at point-blank range. This is what the Democratic Party has to offer to the residents. And, you know, if we had a government that wanted to empower people, then we'd name, we'd take that initiative, and we'd put the home rule charter on the ballot, and let people run to be representatives on that ballot, and empower people to change their government. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Dobson.
Dave Dobson, I'm going to continue wearing my mask. In protest of the people that refuse to get vaccinated, even though it's free, I helped somebody with their vehicle last week, and seemed like they weren't feeling too good. Well, guess why? Six days later, they're not feeling too good either. They still don't have the wisdom to go get tested and maybe get some monoclonal antibodies, and if that's not the case, the test will tell them so. So fortunately, I'm vaccinated, and, you know, we have a lot of good news about the Moderna making us immune. And one of the things that I, when I was a member of the taxpayers on school funding, it always seemed like the people that raised the biggest families, three and four kids, their kids are out of school, they're graduated or whatever, and they're out in their life. And they seem to think that they shouldn't have to pay taxes anymore. You know, I saw an article, news article, that the Chinese government wants to have people have more children. Used to be one more, one, and you went for an abortion the second time, by law. And the Chinese women were saying, how am I ever going to pay to educate two or three kids? Now, the capitalists over there, probably American, don't pay enough tax. don't pay enough taxes to even educate the Chinese children. So, you know, that's something to think about. One of the problems with our government is we never seem to disclose the cost of what we as individuals impose upon the government. And once again, I was only calling last week with you guys when I said, what's the matter with you? When you couldn't make up for $40 million a year or $30 million a year. That was just a joke. But who did it? Where did it start? Under Governor Corbett. You know, so it's something to think about. It's really, I'm against closing schools. Those kids have to walk two miles almost to the nearest school. And some of them are six years old, seven years old. They have to walk on Main Avenue, crossover, where there's a railroad bridge to get on Euclid Avenue to get back in there. Isn't that where they have to go? And, I mean, you go around that turn, you don't see anything. Could be icy. My father was taking us to Central when the bus company went belly up. And I saw the kid at Main Avenue and North Scranton. And he was on the other corner and he ran catty corner. Now, the A pillar of the car, that's the pillar that goes down with your windshield, was blocking his view. The kid ran catty corner, right into the front of my father's vehicle. And I yelled at him to stop and he stopped. But the kid practically ran into the front of the car and fell down. And my father's insurance was sued for $18,000. So that's the kind of stuff that this could generate. And on voter, once again, and 1-202-225-3121. You will get your choice of congresspeople that you wish to talk to. And call them and tell them every day or as often as possible, if you have free dialing, which I do, to, well, it's not free. I pay for it. But, you know, we hear all this stuff. And, I mean, they take my picture at a hospital. Why can't we take our picture at the polls? And then they know that I voted and that's it, you know? None of this, somebody stole the election noise. It's disgusting already.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we'll deal with them in the courts with this fraud. Have a good day.
Thank you. Have a good night. That exhaust the sign-in sheet, Ms. Schumacher?
Good evening, Marie Schumacher. I'd like to start with 7:00 a.m. tonight. And I'm concerned about that Serenti building and what's going on there or what's not going on and the plans that maybe are being conceived someplace, but certainly not shared with the taxpayers. Councilman Gohn, I'm going to read from one of the minutes. It says, "Council Bill Gohn cast the lone dissent at Thursday's meeting, saying the city does not know long-term costs of renovating and maintaining the facility. He cited a conditional assessment last year that pegged estimates of required repairs at $652,600, including a new roof costing $120,000 and utility upgrades, and recommended $352,430 in other repairs." That's exactly the way I feel right now. We don't know the long-term costs. We don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what has already happened. And I think until somebody comes and explains what this, what are they calling it now? An emergency? Anyway, the new name. Somebody needs to tell us about it and give us a long-term plan, at least five years out of what they're going to be spending. And if the mayor's correct, we're going to get revenue because other people are going to be coming in and using that facility. And I'm not too sure, considering all the equipment that's in it, that's a really good idea either. But I think we need to have that before you go ahead and throw some more money at that building. And what's in where the former Engine 15 headquarters was now? Anybody know?
Don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, because, do you know, Mr. Donahue?
I think it's being used as storage, but that stuff is supposed to move to Serenti, is what we were told previously.
See, and back then, it was supposed to be used by somebody else. And it was, and the revenue was going to be used for the maintenance of Serenti. So it's just...
And just, we did make a request to the police chief and any other members of the administration to come in for a caucus before summer recess to discuss the issues you just brought up regarding Serenti.
I think everything should put on hold until that's been discussed. And then moving from there, I guess, to IT. Something has got to be done with the website. I don't know how much time I wasted this weekend trying to get on the website. And it's just very frustrating. I don't have a lot of spare time. And when that keeps happening, it's very disappointing. And when I called Monday, because I still couldn't get on Monday morning, Frank was kind enough to run it down, what was going on. And I already put a call into the mayor's office and I did get a call back that they were working on it. But somebody, IT is important. It's important seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And I can't believe that there's not a person here who can deal with that on weekends. So I gotta read my own writing. And then a month ago, I think it was on the 25th of March, April, I don't know. Anyway, more than a month, we talked about the minutes from the mayor's tax policy meetings be put into third order. And Mr. Donahue, I think you, are you on the committee?
I am, and I did make a request that they be put on the website. And then we, so I haven't been at a meeting since we spoke about that.
Yeah. I thought they meant bi-weekly.
One of them was canceled and I couldn't make one of them. But I did request that the previous ones were put, would be put onto the city website. And then moving forward, we could put those into our third order too.
Well, when do we think we'll see something from that group in?
I don't know.
It's sad.
Just because there are, there are issues with the website, like you said.
The other thing, I came here saying, you know, the operating budget should be on the website. Couldn't find it. Turns out, Mr. Gohn sent me an email, I believe, on it and somebody else. The title's going across the way, it says services, and there's a hammer. So now, isn't that the place you would go and look for an operating budget? Not I. And now, there's, the audit's there, the operating budget, but the capital budget is still not there. So I would like, I wanted to look and see what the Serenti building had in the capital budget.
Right, okay.
But you can't access it because it's not there.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have more. I'll see it around. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address counsel? Mr. Voldenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Councilman Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
No, nothing at this time. I'll address on the question.
Councilman McAndrew, do you have any motions or comments?
I have a couple. So, in these, I'm just revisiting some issues that, Mr. Voldenberg, you did fantastic job, you know, reaching out to the departments and you got me some information back, but I think we have to circle around on a couple. So the first one would be 622 South Irving Avenue. There was trash issues, okay? This warning was issued for trash. And the response we got, and have permits in review. So, and that we got maybe last week, last week. So the gentleman that initiated this concern or this complaint said, you know, it's still going on. Trash is still here. He'd like an update. The neighbors want an update. They just want to know how many chances this person's going to get? Because this has been going on for five years, so. And I said, you know, of course, I'll pass this along and inquire. So that's the first one. The second one, okay, so help me understand this. So this, I didn't bring up a council, but I sent you an email. So this was, regards to 503 Fellow Street. And it was a rooster complaint, okay? And, you know, it's determined after you first sent correspondence that it's a zoning issue. And the update said the ordinance does not differentiate between roosters and hens. But I don't know, maybe I'm mistaken or, my understanding was you can have hens and not roosters. You can have two chickens and not roosters, so. Can you just follow up one more time, please? Does anybody else, anybody else here ever had this situation brought to you before in the past?
Yes. I believe there was a couple of issues on that one.
Okay, so just, let's circle around again, just to be positive, all right?
I'll follow up, Mr. McAndrew.
Thank you. And then, okay, so this is, this I brought up maybe a couple of weeks ago. These are two overgrown lots on Hampton Street. One next to Willard School, one across the street. I know this was a couple of weeks ago. They're still overgrown. I don't think anything's been done. And I got a call about that. And then I'd also like an update on 125 to 125, 127 North St. Francis Cabrini. We, I first brought this forward in April. And we were told that, you know, there's some police raids, you know, it's a nuisance property. There's in-and-out drug activity, there's trash and et cetera. You know, there's criminal mischief has been on the reports. But the latest update we got was that, it was from Mississippi Breandy, that, you know, we're looking at all this stuff. We have, we're going to start this code enforcement task force and we're going to look into it and we're going to prove the processes in this. So this was April and all this still continues there. So please, circle around for that one. Also, I have another issue. So this has just been brought to my attention. So back in May, we had a beautiful rollout of the Hometown Hero Banners program. It was fantastic. And it was great to see all these family members, very proud to see, you know, their own heroes displayed on poles. So what's happened recently is, I just drove on the way here. I saw three or four that are falling apart. I don't know if it's, if it's, if it's the installation was the issue or the hardware itself, because it looks more flimsy than the hardware on other banners that are in Taylor or any other boroughs. So, and here's the thing. So I know it was a leadership Lackawanna program that they would, you know, it was just a program or a project, they would hand it off to the city. And then, you know, the city pretty much is going to hand it off to a veterans organization. But how they were installed, the city didn't install them, but they secured someone to do that. So maybe we go back and look at, or reach out, please reach out to Mr. Priambo, because he was involved in the installation, and the mayor to make sure that, you know, I think it's still our responsibility to keep them up. We promised we'd keep them up for a year. They're only up a month, so. Until, until the total handoff to these organizations, I still think it's the city's responsibility to make sure that these are corrected. And they look, it's very sad to see these driving up the street. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Councilman McAndrew. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I just wanted to respond to a few things brought up during citizens' participation. I felt that there's very important subjects brought up. And one of them with the repeal of the fireworks state law, I feel would be, would be really important. I think the fireworks are bothersome and an equality of life issue for our residents and affecting veterans or people with PTSD, animals. I believe last year, as a council, we had called for the state repeal of the fireworks. So I'm glad to see now that there were several local mayors who also joined in that call for potential repeal. I would love to see that happen. And I'd love to be able to take my dog out at night during the summer because he doesn't want to go out now. He wakes us up more than the baby does in the middle of the night. So the other thing that I wanted to bring up was the Home Rule Charter. And I believe I've been on the record before being in support of a review of the Home Rule Charter. I do believe that we need to get the ball rolling and inform the commission in order to do that. And I think it's just due time to review that and see where we can improve upon the Home Rule Charter. And regarding the website issues, yeah, I think with any new website, it's going to be a work in progress. However, I've experienced the issues myself and I can understand the frustration. And I've had my own frustrations with IT so far. I called to get my email fixed yesterday morning and I still haven't received a call back. So if, as a councilwoman, I can't receive a call back, I can imagine that might be difficult for other city employees or residents. So I hope to work on resolving that and making that a better process for everyone. And that's everything that I have for now. I'll respond on the question regarding the legislation tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments tonight?
Yes. Just quickly, Mr. Voldenberg, would we be able to ask, would you be able to send a request to DPW asking them for an update and/or list of how many streets were cleaned with the street sweeper to date? Maybe through June 30th, since June 30th is tomorrow. I know we have a limited number of street sweepers, but we do have more than we've had in the past. And I know there is a new process being used this year. At the same time, I think the ultimate goal is some sort of alternate side of the street parking. But let's see how this is working to date. Myself and Mr. Gohn were at a meeting last week between city officials and DEP regarding the flooding at Leggett and Leech Creek. It is, there is no easy solution to their issues over there, but I was happy to hear tonight that DEP did issue emergency permits for Leech Creek, one section of it, and the eastern side of Leggett's Creek. And a lot of frustration spoiled over. And one of the things that I wasn't happy about at that meeting was the way that the representative from DEP and also a representative of DPW spoke to residents. I know if they were in the public sector, that they wouldn't be employed anymore if they spoke to customers like that, the way that they spoke to residents. But at the same time, we still need to all work together. I know Councilman Gohn and the rest of the council are looking forward to developing long-term solutions to some of these issues. Also, for, I brought up a couple of weeks ago some issues with quality of life concerns in South Side. I know 1601 South Webster has received zoning, fire, code enforcement, and SPD warnings about all cars and tires. Hopefully, they followed up on that since then. 2204 South Webster Avenue was issued a door tag and an inspector will follow up to see if anything has been done. 1030 Cedar Avenue was issued a door tag and an inspector will follow up to see if anything has been done. 524 Gibbons Street, which has been an issue for a few years now, they actually had violation letters sent. And then one property, the issue was actually taken care of before the inspector got out there. We also received a street paving request for Pike Street. And we did receive a response that Tom Priambo and Chris Jenkins assessed this street and it does not warrant a complete paving, but the potholes on the street were fixed. And that's all I have for right now until on the question.
Thank you. Councilman McAndrew would like to add a correction as comments.
Yeah, Mr. Voldenberg, I apologize. This is the second time I've done this with this complaint. It's with regards to the overgrown, the two properties, one is next to Willard and one's across the street. It's actually Einan Street and not Hampton, all right? Okay, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a few things tonight. We heard a presentation during the public caucus from HRG, who was looking at the stormwater management issues in the city and the fact that we do have to act. And after hearing the presentation tonight, in my opinion, it would be absolute political malpractice if we do not work together and approach stormwater management on a regional level. If we do not work together and we go it alone, or other municipalities and boroughs go it alone under the MS4 permit and all the regulations and requirements, we're going to lose out on major savings, we'll lose out on major efficiencies if we try to attack this as, like we do with other things in the county, as little political fiefdoms and not as a region. Yes, this is an unfunded mandate. I asked the question of the gentleman from HRG tonight, what happens if we do nothing? We get fined eventually, the hammer comes down, $10,000 a day. There's many people, and I understand, understand it, who are upset about the fact that this is an unfunded mandate. But the longer we stand around and complain about that, and I hear a lot of misinformation about the rain tax and other things, and if we don't do anything, the more out of compliance we get. And the worse the flooding issues are. The interesting point that the, the gentleman and the woman that were here tonight from HRG made was that there, all the development in the Abingtons, all the things that are going on upstream obviously affects Scranton. Councilman Donahue and I saw that firsthand as we were standing on, at Leach Creek and Leggett's Creek. So it's no, it, it, this just didn't come out of thin air. Yes, there are, the storms are worse than they were 50, 60 years ago. I'm sure climate change has something to do with it, but it also is because of things that are happening outside of Scranton as well. So we do need to do something. I was very pleased with the report, but we do have to approach this on a regional level. Just does not make any sense whatsoever to do this on our own. So I would like, and I was happy to hear, that meetings are going to be set up with the county commissioners immediately so that we can get the ball rolling on this. To address Ms. Hodowanis's questions, and I hope that I get all of them tonight, the controllers' report last week or the week before, Mr. Waldenberg, can you touch on that? That was a, Mr. Waldenberg spoke with the Controller's Office. That was a tan payment? Am I correct in saying that?
That involved two tan payments, Mr. Gunn, April and May.
Okay.
On the May report.
Okay. So that, that was two tan payments that were combined in the controllers' report. That was why the figure was so large. The question on overtime in city council, I can explain that one. So city council had $500 in overtime, budgeted for 2021. We spent $602.46, so we're over budget by, yes, 120%, but in all reality, it's 102.46. And the reason for that is we had an employee who was out for quite a few months. We were working with a city clerk and only one employee in our office. So that's the explanation behind that. Mr. Waldenberg, if you can please put the memos that council received from the DPW Director and the Fire Chief regarding 6B and 6C, the transfers out of the contingency fund into third order for next week. We'll speak more about this when we get to agenda items, but we asked for an explanation on 6B and 6C, and we did receive a lengthy memo from the Fire Chief and a memo from the DPW Director with some explanation. I know in talking to the rest of council, there are some additional questions, but I think that did clear up some of the issues from last week. So if we could put that into third order. In regards to the, the tabled item of VARO advisors, I did ask Mr. Waldenberg to put that in eighth order under old business. I'm not sure if we're going to bring that back next week. There are still additional questions on that, and I do think we'll eventually make amendments to it. The, the next issue I wanted to talk about was the IT Department. Obviously, there are issues with the IT Department, as Dr. Rothschild pointed out and others. I do think at this point that council should invite Mr. Dealey and any other city officials, the mayor, whoever else, into a public caucus to give us an update, a full update on everything that's going on within the IT Department. We are spending a significant amount of money, I believe it's over $12,000 a month with Bedrock Technologies. There are other issues that have been raised, so I think put everything out onto the table. And Mr. Waldenberg, if you can invite Mr. Dealey and whatever other city officials to a upcoming council caucus, I would appreciate that. We did get a response, I think this goes back to another one of Ms. Hodowanis's questions about the CBAs on the city website. So Mr. Dealey did respond that the Single Tax Office and Firefighters Collective Bargaining Agreements will be added to the website this week. They didn't really have an explanation as to why they were deleted off the website, but they will be put on, according to him, this week. Mrs. Jeffries had a question last week as well regarding Clay Avenue and Vine Street, and the Corporal Butler is on a military obligation until next week. So once he's back, they'll take care of that request for, or look into her request on Clay Avenue. It's a question that I posed a few weeks ago, and I still don't quite understand it. We, we didn't get a response yet, but Mr. Waldenberg, if you could pose this again. As everyone knows, on the agenda tonight, we'll look at some grant funding for parks throughout the city. We pushed for $50,000 to be put into the Parks and Recreation Budget for a casual program. In the past, under different city administrations over the years, there was usually a casual program specifically for parks and recreation, hire high school kids, college kids to go and help cut the grass and weed whack and things like that. Why they're not utilizing that money in the budget, I don't understand. So if we can follow up and find out why that money has not been tapped yet and why that program has not been instituted, I would appreciate it. Back to the IT Department for a second. We received a letter, or I was copied on a letter, and so was Councilman Schuster, from the city controller, and he had concerns about the professional services line item in the IT Department. In the 2021 budget, they have a, we budgeted $245,000. To date, the IT Department has spent $227,331.90. So the remaining balance is $17,668.10. As I mentioned or alluded to earlier, we're spending $12,500 per month, per the April Emergency Declaration, and another $5,000 per month for other services. So Controller Murray is, was concerned, and rightfully so, that we're going to max out of that, that budget line item. There were some other concerns as well that he listed in the letter. Mr. Dealey had responded, they're going to transfer funds from a salary line item. I, I don't quite understand that. I think we need further clarification. There's, you know, money being moved around all over the place in the IT Department. So again, I think we need to bring them in and, and figure out exactly what's, what's happening there. The other thing I would like an update on, we have not talked about this in, in quite some time, is the Act 47 recommendation updates. Couple of months ago, I had asked for an update. Mr. Dealey did provide a timeline or, or a snapshot of all the recommendations that were listed in the Act 47 Recovery Plan and where the city was with those recommendations and implementing them. One of them, out of the many that are in there, was the debt management policy that council was very interested in. The other one that we have not heard about in a while is the payroll preparation tax. There was also one that I've always been interested in for the last several years, which is the Updated Human Resources Management Plan, and there's a list of others. So if we can get another update to council on where the administration is with fulfilling those recommendations, I would appreciate it. Also, I got a request from a resident in Manuka, Mr. Waldenberg, Murphy Court, right off of Davis Street, needs pothole patching. If they can address that. We are going to discuss amongst the council, and I mentioned this last week, the zoning board appointments, so we do still need to fill Mr. Marx's position. His term expires July 1st, 2023, and there is another open position for a five-year term. And then there are two alternates. So we will have those discussions, and then Solicitor Hayes will draft the legislation, and we will appoint those people, hopefully within the next two weeks. And I think that's all I had. Oh, the last thing that I had on pave cuts. Since I've been on council, we've gotten complaints about pave cuts every year, and again, rightfully so. This year, it seems to be much, much more complaints about pave cuts. We do have a new pave cut inspector. Three or four weeks ago, I asked for a report from the pave cut inspector from the DPW on how they're approaching this, is, are they doing it differently? Because we are getting an unbelievable amount of complaints about pave cuts. So Mr. Waldenberg, if you could circle back around again with the DPW Director and ask that, that information be provided, I would appreciate it. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
5B, for introduction and ordinance, amending file of the council number 56, 2021, as amended, which amended file of the council number 8, 1987, and file of the council number 87, 1976, entitled, Providing for the Levy and Collection of a License for All Performers, Entertainers, Sporting Teams, Musical Groups, Bands, Theatrical Cast, Dancing Groups, Recital Groups, Paid Lecturers, and Speakers by Increasing Fees, to Reduce the One-Day Fee in Section 3 from $50 to $20 due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5C, for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Lawrence D. West, 220 Linden Street, apartment 509, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18503, to the position of Business Administrator effective June 1st, 2021.
This time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. I have, I have a couple of problems with this. So I know we received this gentleman's resume three weeks late, four weeks late. He's in the position already. And yesterday, I asked for a job description. I asked to have it by today. I was able to find the IT job description that's on the website, but it seems that this doesn't exist. So, so when I look at the resume, I don't see any experience or education that would, that would comply with any business administrator job, job description. So, so with that said, so we talked about, early in the year, we talked, we asked for job descriptions, they were being created. Clerks were furloughed, at the beginning of the pandemic, they were brought back with new job descriptions based on their skill set. They were told, no, you can't bid. This is, you have to take this job. So, and this used to happen to the school district. So now, I, I can't, I'm on, I'm not okay with approving, and this is nothing personal, this is definitely nothing personal, but I'm not okay with approving a person doesn't have the skill set. So, like, I'm in education, so it'd be like having, you know, the gym teacher, nothing against him, teaching honors calculus. It just doesn't make sense. And I know this might upset a couple of people. Like I said, it's nothing personal, but I know this might upset a couple of people in administration, but I'd rather that than upset, you know, 70,000 taxpayers that, that, you know, I need to focus on their best interests, because this is, this is paid by them. So, like I said, just swinging back, my role is, is to review and scrutinize legislation that's put in front of me and formulate a decision with my own thought process. And this one, I think, right now is, is the right decision for me to vote no, you know, taking the interest of the, the best interest of the taxpayers.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
Yes, also on the question, I do have some concerns with this, with the city exiting Act 47 and having people with financial backgrounds in the past. I do think it's a necessity to have someone with a financial background. Again, it was an uphill battle on the, on the school board, and we did interview for several different CEOs of the district and didn't hire when we, we took one from in-house, but that uphill battle was to get someone with the, the correct skill set. So with this being said, I, I think I, I did compare and contrast the, the description in the Home Rule Charter to this, to this resume, but I, I do think I would further need a job description, or at least the administration to come in and explain what their vision is for the city.
Anyone else on the question? Just one thing. I've known Mr. West now for eight years, even before that, when he was the chief of staff for Senator Blake. I've always had a really good relationship with Mr. West. He's always been, always been very professional. I saw how he ran Senator Blake's office and did so with integrity and was always really on, on the ball and on the spot with information. So I will be voting yes. I think he will do a good job as the business administrator. And like I said, I think he has, he, in the past, has proven himself as the chief of staff for Senator Blake and doing a very, very good job. So I'll be voting yes. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
5D, for introduction, a resolution, appointment of Carl Dealey, 711 North Webster Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, to the position of Information Technology Director within the Office of Business Administration, effective June 1st, 2021.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
So, oh, go ahead, Tom. So on the question, similar concerns with this position as with 5C, although both very nice resumes, Mr. Dealey has a, has a background in mechanical engineering, he may be more fit for, for the DPW. But when looking at this, I, it was brought up in public comment, overseeing IT operations, security risk, performance matrix, these are some of the things that are part of that job description, including in that job description, there's six years' experience in IT operations, two years' experience in overseeing IT teams and projects, which, which aren't there. When looking at the Controller's Report for the month of May, at this point in time, after five months of the year, we've used 92% of the professional services budget for the IT Department, and I'm seeing a pattern that's starting to occur in several different departments in the city where maybe some of the, the blind spots of, of the department head are being supplemented by, by services and consultant groups, and they're, they're costing the city money. And I don't think it's in the best financial interest, so I'll be voting no to this as well.
Anyone else on the question?
Yes, on the question. So I, I pretty much have the same rationale as, as the last resolution. I mean, I like Mr. Dealey. He's a nice guy. This is nothing personal. But I at least got that job description. There's, there's one for, there's one for the IT Director, but not the business administrator, which is probably the second most important, or you could debate it, the most important job in the city. So, but I got this. The other one doesn't exist. But at least I looked at this, and it's, like I said, it's nothing personal. He, he was the business administrator, and all of a sudden, he's the IT Director. I just have a problem with that because, like I said, I'm in education. So I work at the Career Technology Center. I teach culinary arts for umpteenth years. You'd be like, my boss coming to me tomorrow and saying, you know what, Mark? Come fall, you did a great job as a culinary guy, but come fall, come fall, you can teach welding. And it just doesn't make sense. So I look at it this way, I look at, you know, the best interest of the taxpayers that, you know, that I'm here for and, and represent, and it just, the shuffling of positions, and it's, it's not the first position to be shuffled around since, since I'm here or since the new administration. So I just find a little more cohesiveness and, and more, I guess, bang for the buck with regards to educational background and skill sets. So that is why I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Anyone else on the question?
Yes, on the question, I'd like to add, I understand the, the concerns related to Mr. Dealey's background and this position. I, I would say that I, I also know they've been looking for some time to fill the position, and they interviewed several candidates and had difficulty finding candidate with, I believe, the appropriate skill set because of the salary. I think that was a factor in, in making it more difficult to find a candidate for this position. And I, I know that we're not going to be changing the salary because it's already set in the budget, so I, I don't see an alternative at this time. So I will be voting in favor of Mr. Dealey as IT Director for that reason.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so moved.
5E, for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an agreement between the City of Scranton and Fidelity Bank for American Rescue Plan, ARP, Depository Banking Services, from July 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2024.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, as everyone knows, the city is expecting to receive $68.7 million through the American Rescue Plan.
through the American Rescue Plan from the Biden Administration. This legislation is going to be, we're entering into an agreement with Fidelity Bank to put those funds into an account there. They're going to charge us $2,500 per month, per the agreement, and we're supposed to earn $49,000 in interest over the next 12 months. And this is from 2021 through 2024. The city has until December 31, 2024, to expend those monies. Anyone else on the question?
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5F for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the City of Scranton application for grant funds from the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a flood mitigation program, FMP, grant in the amount of $71,825, to repair and/or replace a collapsed Gabion basket wall previously constructed upstream of the South Webster Avenue Bridge, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
At this time I'll entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Councilman Donahue and I have really been pushing for this legislation for the past few months. We were out on scene with the gentleman who lives on South Webster Avenue, whose home has been, and property has been affected by this issue. I appreciate the administration moving pretty quickly on this to get it on our agenda, and I think that this will have a great impact in helping him not, you know, not face these flooding issues and, and all the other issues that he faces because of the flooding at this creek. Anyone else on the question?
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5G for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the City of Scranton and Green Tech Energy Services Incorporated to install retrofit LED lighting.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, a few weeks ago, this was introduced at fifth order, and I had a couple of questions on it. There was, the original contract that was with the, with the prior company from 1819 was, they were to do a study on three city-owned facilities and headquarters, and, and one of the questions I had was, did we use that study that came out of that contract to, you know, work off of, for the RFP for this contract? And I didn't get any answers to those questions yet, so I'll, I'll move it forward with the introduction, but I'd still like to get an answer as to whether we use that study from the 2018-19 contract to decide what we're going to do for the RFP and to move forward on this work.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5H for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the City of Scranton application for grant funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a greenways, trails, and recreation program grant in the amount of $109,523 for repairs and upgrades to Oakmont Park, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
At this time I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
I'd just like to say, I'm glad to see the city's applying for grants to make these upgrades to our parks.
Anyone else on the question? This is a beautiful area in the City of Scranton. The, I was looking, reviewing the plans today for this park, it really is going to be an outstanding project. The one question I had, and this goes for all the other grants that are on the agenda tonight, the city is going to commit a match to this project. This specific one is almost $20,000 match. I just wanted to be sure if we can confirm where that, those funds are coming from. I believe there is a line item in the budget, grant, match, line item, but I just want to triple check on that. Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5I for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the City of Scranton application for grant funds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a greenways, trails, and recreation program grant in the amount of $244,698 for repairs and upgrades to Robinson Park, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
At this time I'll entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, again, glad to see the city's applying for these grants. I think it might be helpful for council to know how many of these grants the OECD has applied for since January, and how many have been accepted or approved. I know a lot of grants are, are going out, but how many of those, how many grants are, have been written, and how many have been approved?
Anyone else on the question?
This is a great project. I have hung around when I was younger at, at Robinson Park. It's the only park in the city with a lake, and one of the things that I didn't even realize until I read through this legislation was that this park is actually 30 acres of land in the City of Scranton. It, there's trails, there's a basketball court, a playground. The only, you know, bad thing with this park over the years is it's been neglected in terms of investment. We do have to give credit to the East Mountain Neighborhood Association. They have been really, really pushing for this, so they do deserve a lot of credit. And again, the plans for this park, they look outstanding, and I'm looking forward to, to seeing this project through. Anyone else on the question?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
5J for introduction, a resolution, ratifying and approving the City of Scranton application for grant funds from the Commonwealth Financing Authority of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for a flood mitigation program, FMP, grant in the amount of $500,000 for the Meadowbrook Flood Control Project, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
This time I'll entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, back on March 16, we passed Resolution 135, which was the sponsorship agreement with DEP, so I'm taking it that this is the next, next step in that, in this, in this process. At that time, I inquired to Joe O'Brien if there was going to be a request for qualifications regarding the law firms that would be working to secure the easements, and I know, we, we asked Joe O'Brien on the 16th of March if there was going to be an RFQ for the qualifications on the law firms that are going to have to secure these easements. So, we were looking to get a process, what's the administration's process going to be for, for choosing those law firms?
So, one of the things, Councilman Schuster, that I would like to ask for, that I think will, will answer your, your question, and if, in the, within the legislation, one of the requirements from the, the state, city officials, Riley Associates, is that they meet with city officials and meet with the neighbors to update, update them on the project. So, I would like to ask for a public caucus with city officials, Riley Associates, who's the engineer, so that they can bring us up to speed on where we stand here, where the neighbors stand. I've been getting a lot of questions from neighbors on this, and as we know from the last time we were updated, this is going to be a lengthy process. As Councilman Schuster noted, we did, the city did enter into a sponsorship agreement with DEP. Based on that agreement, DEP will be the one, ones performing the construction activities, while the city's going to be responsible for adoption of the watershed stormwater management plan, acquisition of project lands, which is a huge part of this, and, and that's probably going to be the most time-consuming, is going out and, and acquiring some of the land there and some of the homes, removal, relocation, and adjustment of any conflicting utilities and structures. Again, that's also going to be a time-consuming process, and then just the operation and, and maintenance of the completed project. So, the request for funding here is in the amount of $500,000. The city's providing a $348,386 match, and the request for funding is going to be used for the acquisition, the removal, relocation, adjustments of the utilities and structures, and then the operation and maintenance of the completed project. So, Mr. Volenberg, if you can ask for a public caucus with DEP, Riley Associates, and city officials, so that they can give us a complete update on this project, and then we'll obviously get that out to the property owners, and hopefully they can be there as well.
I'll take care of it.
Anyone else on the question?
So, yeah, no, with that just being said, Kevin, was that something that we followed up on after that meeting? I know it was thrown out there, me and you had a short conversation about it, but...
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're not, they're, I don't think they're near that pro, like, they're not there.
Yeah, I don't think, I was just looking preemptively, before we get into a situation where we have law firms, you know, making hundreds of thousands of dollars here on, on these acquisitions, it might be good to get that answer upfront.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, File of the Council Number 73, 2021, and ordinance, amending file of the Council Number 10, 2020, and ordinance as amended, entitled, Authorizing the Mayor and Other Appropriate City Officials to Grant a Special Encroachment Permit to City Retail Businesses and Restaurants to Operate on City Right-A-Ways to Extend the Time Period Until December 31, 2021.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass, reading by title.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6B, reading by title, File of the Council Number 74, 2021, and ordinance, amending file of the Council Number 35, 2020, and ordinance as amended, entitled, General City Operating Budget 2021 by Transferring $76,800 from Account Number as Noted, Non-Departmental Expenditures Contingency, to Account Number as Noted, Department of Public Works, Refuse Rental and Vehicle Equipment, to Provide Sufficient Funding for the Rental of Two Refused Vehicles Through the 2021 Budget Period.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, we did get a response back from DPW that will be in third order last week, but the main thing I got off this is that routine service wasn't being performed on these trucks, and it wasn't being completed as scheduled due to a lack of reliable spare trucks to, to fill daily slots of 14 trucks. I think that's one of the problems we have in the maintenance part of DPW. We only have three mechanics, and they're on the same, their shift is the same shift as when the trucks are going out. So, in order to perform maintenance on trucks, you have to take the trucks off the road. Going back, probably a little over a decade, there were five mechanics in DPW. Three that were on during the day to deal with normal things that came up throughout the course of the day, and then two that were on a schedule that was after the trucks had already came in, and then that's when the routine maintenance was performed. And I think that's something we need to get into, because if you're looking at this, we're spending $76,000 for six months to rent two trucks. I mean, if you were to times that by two, to bring that out to a year, you could more than pay for two more mechanics with $140,000, $150,000. That's all I have.
On the question, I had similar concerns to Councilman Donahue. I do appreciate that we've received the information we requested, a lot more details on what repairs were needed for both 6B and 6C. However, I, some of these issues are dating back to, like, 2019, and this is the first that we're hearing about it, and these repairs were not budgeted for previously, and that's, that's why the transfers are coming to us now. And even so, they've already gone ahead with the rental of, of the refuse vehicles and the repair of the fire department ladder. So, I, I still don't understand why this is coming to us now, and the repairs have already been taken place. So, if we voted this down, what other option would they have? Where would they find that, that money within the budget that they were already provided for these departments? I don't have an issue with making sure that these two departments have the supplies and the vehicles that they need. That's very important for them to perform their job functions, but I, I just take issue with the process of how this is coming to us. That's all. Thank you.
Also on the question, last week, I, I was glad to hear that several of the council members had, had the same concerns as I had with these couple, with these two, 6B and 6C. You know, just as our councilwoman said, there's no issue with these departments getting this, but the process that, that is occurring, we, we asked a week ago for information on, on these two things, to be expedient, and at this point in time, I still haven't gotten a chance to read those emails, so I'm glad that the emails have come through, but with my work schedule and getting here to meetings, when they're coming at Tuesday, I, I don't know what time they're, they're arriving today, but I, I don't have any time to, to process through that, those answers and make an informed decision. So, glad to see it came, and I'll have time to read those before it goes into seventh order.
Anyone else on the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
6C, reading by title, File of the Council Number 75, 2021, and ordinance, amending file of the Council Number 35, 2020, and ordinance as amended, entitled, General City Operating Budget 2021 by Transferring $103,000 from Account Number as Noted, Non-Departmental Expenditures Contingency, to Account Number as Noted, Department of Public Works, Garage Service, and Maintenance Fee for the Repayment of the Fire Department Ladder Truck Repairs.
You've heard reading by title of item 6C, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6C pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I share everyone else's concerns. My other concern is that, yeah, I don't, I want to check back on this, but I don't remember the city, a city administration using contingency funds this early in the year. We have $400,000 budgeted, and we've almost used half of it already on things that should have been budgeted for, and why aren't we transferring money from within the departments, which is the way that I've seen it done in the past? So, I would like further clarification on that. Anyone else?
Also on the question, with that being said, President Gahan, I've seen the same situation occur as I, as I process over the IT department. We, we knew there was going to be an upgrade, yet this year in the budget, there was less of a line item. We're down, I think, three positions, so that should shore up some money, but we're still overbudgeted in that department. Just doesn't make sense.
Anyone else? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Community Development for Adoption, Resolution Number 179, 2021, ratifying and approving the acceptance of the grant funds by the City of Scranton from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for the 2015 Local Share Account Grant Gaming Funds, Monroe County, in the amount of $225,000 to convert the Sorrenti Memorial Army Reserve Center located at 1801 Pine Street into an emergency services center, and authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the grant, coordinate, and disburse the grant funds as appropriate.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Community Development?
As Chair for the Committee on Community Development, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, did we get the, the information that we asked for last week on the, the total expenditures on this building?
No, we asked for, Mr. Volenberg requested a caucus with the chief of police and any other city officials to update us on this project. We have to go back and look in the records, but we did receive a pretty lengthy analysis of the money that was spent to date and other items that we had requested. I don't have that in front of me right now, but obviously that has probably changed now, it's been a few months, but we did not receive anything yet. But I'm hoping that within the next week or two that we would get those officials in to give us a... officials in to give us an update on it.
Is there any kind of timeline or deadline with this money?
On page, let's see, page number three, priority status deadlines, funding must be spent by June 30, 2021.
I think that's the issue we have here, is that, you know, it's money that was awarded to something else, so unless we reallocate it, it's either a use it or lose it situation, unfortunately.
Right.
On the question, I'm looking forward to an update on the Sorenti project.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes, I hereby declare item seven A legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, old business, nothing at this time.
There's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.